Good evening. Good evening. There we go. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sherry, our mission statement, please.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Candace, here. Sandra?
Here.
Deborah?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I am here, we have a forum.
Thank you. Before we approve our agenda, Agenda Item Number 13, closed session to consider the dismissal, suspension, or discipline of an employee pursuant to Section 8A of the Michigan Opens Meeting Act will be removed from the agenda. So I am looking for a motion, I'm looking for a motion to approve the amended agenda. So moved. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Do I have a second?
Support. Angela?
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Walmsley?
In your packet, we have some new hires, appointments, and some resignations. First one, I'll start with the resignations. Brenda Velu, you approved at the last board meeting, and during the board meeting, she submitted her resignation. So she is taking a position in another district before she even started here. Melissa Mayo, secretary at the elementary school. Darlene McNichol. Haley Swab, also on the resignation list. Under new hires, Sandra James, varsity track coach. Matthew Rosso, first legal league coach. Nicole Schaefer, media center professional at the high school. Lisa Whedner, a bus driver. And the woman here tonight is Michael Woodberg, right there, middle school dean of students. So I'd like to introduce you to Michael Woodberg.
I'm really excited to be here today. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to be in this position. I'd like to thank Mr. Walmsley. You know, it's an honor to be here. It's an honor to be put in this spot. I'm just super excited to be a Blue Devil. And also, I'd like to thank my wife for all of her public support. You know, without her, I definitely wouldn't be here. So I'm just super excited. I can't wait to get in and start working. And I know that I'm gonna do my best for Richmond students every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Woodberg comes to us from West Blueville High School, right? As a teacher slash assistant to the dean of students for about eight years, 70 years. He's been doing about the same role as the dean of students here. Lot of energy, a lot of excitement. He was a strong candidate when we interviewed. He'll begin in about two weeks at the middle school. Ms. Morello's first day was today. So now with the appointment, we have our administrative team at the middle school.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
So welcome here.
Good deal.
Very good.
Good. Any, I'm sorry.
And last one is Kenneth, is now Kenneth Caram, is junior varsity baseball coach. He was freshman, I believe, last year. We didn't run the league freshman, so he moves up with the retirement or resignation of Mr. D'Avano. I didn't have any errors that were brought to my attention from the regular board meeting on the 14th or on the 21st special board meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Walmsley?
Yes. The bus driver, is that in addition to the one from last time training?
Isn't the same?
It's an addition.
It's an addition. Oh, that's exciting. Okay.
Now, does that one still have to go through all the training and everything?
This one has more of the requirements already met, so it shouldn't take as long.
Awesome. Good. Excellent. And then I just have questions at the high school, the math and science teachers. What's the status with those? I know there were some concerns about the science class.
Science, we have not yet found a teacher. We are still posting and interviewing. Math, Mrs. Bulwark and Mrs. Zabel interviewed today. They actually found a very strong candidate that will come to me for second interviews sometime this week to bring on board as soon as possible. If that is the case, there will be a little bit of a shuffle because we'll probably, Mr. Misko will likely back into PE and fill his math with the new person. So we're still looking for the science.
What's our thoughts? Because is there a retired person out there somewhere? Just because I know I've been hearing some things that kids are struggling in that class.
There are some retirees that are interested. They just haven't met that nine-month sitting out period. I'm very hopeful during lame duck, they will reduce it to six months, which will allow many of them to begin working January 1.
Okay.
Because there is several that have talked to us and that they're interested.
Okay. Thank you.
So do we currently have then a long-term sub in that classroom? Is that what we have?
The students in the science class are assigned to Edgenui.
That's the, okay, alright.
And we have a long-term sub who's not a science certified person.
Okay.
The E2020 person. But again, it's not, it's not the same as a classroom teacher in that type of science class.
Okay, so one more quick question. So these individuals that are retirees that are interested in maybe coming back, they haven't had the nine-month period yet, how close are they to that?
Well, if anybody retired at the end of last year, they have till December 31st and January 1.
Okay.
They could come back sooner, but they'd have to set aside their retirement.
Right, right.
And if they waited till, well, let me back up. If it remains nine months, you're talking March of next year, because you have to sit out nine months. There was talk about moving into six months. I don't know really with the lame duck and the switching over of the Republicans and Democrats if it's gonna actually happen. But if it did, then January 1, then they could, they could begin working.
Okay. Thank you.
Can they, they can't substitute teach?
The way the law is written, you can't work in the district for the nine months after retirement.
Even working for an outside, so, okay.
Once you've met that number, then you can work in the district.
Okay.
Are these retirees, former Richmond staff or elsewhere?
The ones that I've had, elsewhere. I've heard some Richmond staff might be interested, but I have not, I have not talked to them directly.
We may address this later on, but is there a House bill or Senate bill that we should contact with the legislator about in regards to this in any way?
I'm not aware of one that's been introduced. I know there was talk prior to the election about reducing, but I have not, I'm not aware of one that's been introduced to reduce it.
Okay. Thank you.
But based on the schedule they have in December, they're not meeting very much.
Right, sure.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our first presentation for this evening is our Crisis Alert Notification System.
This is pretty exciting for, before I'll turn it over to Mr. Trend and Matt Young. This is originally gonna be on, as part of our school safety protocols as an action item. And then as we more talk about it, I think it's really important for the board to understand what they would be, what we're asking you to approve. So here tonight, you know Preston Trend, he's the director of athletics facility and school safety. Matt Young is the region vice president in the Midwest for Crisis Alert, the product that we're looking at. So I will turn it over to them, and just let me know when you want to move the screen.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm joining here tonight with Matt Young from Crisis Alert. Mr. Young met with Mr. Walmsley and I about a month ago now and showed us the Crisis Alert device that you guys all, it's like you all have an example of. It's really exciting, the versatility and how much use I think we can get out of these in the district as we start to look at constantly improving our safety and our response to crises on district or on campus. I've spoken to a colleague of mine at North Branch. They currently use this system. He's actually the athletic director there as well. And he had rave reviews about it. He says it really comes in handy when, and Matt will talk more about this, the coverage it covers campus with, the ease at which administrators and people in that crisis team get alerted to it. So I think it's a really exciting product. I think it's something that would be extremely beneficial to the district. So I don't want to steal too much of Matt's stuff.
Thanks, Preston. Appreciate it. Loke?
Hi.
Thanks, Reverend Man, I appreciate it. It's nice to work in my backyard. I live in McComb County as well, too, so it's always nice to protect local schools. It's also exciting, you guys will be the second district in the area to bring Crisis Alert aboard. So it's very exciting to have the opportunity to help support the staff and the students here. Mr. Walmsley, if you want to go ahead and the next slide. So as I talk about Crisis Alert here tonight, you guys all have a badge in front of you, so we'll play with these in a second so you can get a feel for it. But you know, so many things are happening in schools nowadays, especially from the safety and security standpoint, that it's very tough at times to get the focus back on your academic and learning goals, right, and academic achievement. So that's really what we're trying to do. We're trying to empower all staff to be able to support, but also allow them to feel safe at the same time, so they can get back to those learning and achievement goals in the classroom. So the badge, it is designed for every single staff member in the district to wear. So it doesn't matter what your position is. You could be a teacher in the classroom, you could work as a custodian, you could work in the lunchroom, you could work in the front office. Everyone is empowered to call for help. There are so many different types of incidents that happen, you know, throughout the course of a week or a month or throughout the school year. From the everyday, you know, medical emergency or a fight in the hallway, to more extreme, there could be a weapon on campus or something worse, right? But you know, to be able to allow everyone and empower them to call for help is a big step. And so that's what we're doing with the badge today. So there's really four main areas that make the Crisis Alert badge unique and unique in what we do to help protect the staff and students. One is that one-button activation. So if you guys, if you haven't yet, press the button three times on the top of the badge. You'll feel it vibrate in your hand. That lets you know that an alert was just sent. Now, not really. Now, if these were live badges, an alert would just be sent. But it's one-button activation. But you see how simple it is. It's designed that way for a reason, so even in a fight or flight scenario, folks still have the wherewithal to be able to press a button on a badge, okay? So it's super easy to use, and I'll get into the two main uses here in a second, but that's the first thing. The second thing is location accuracy. So when you press that button, like you just did, that call for help will go to campus responders. You'll have designated campus responders on each one of your campuses. They'll know who's calling for help and exactly where they're located, inside or outside of the building, okay? So we truly cover every square foot of the property, which kind of goes into the total campus coverage. So we cover not only every nook and cranny inside, but outside, your parking lots, your ball fields, your playgrounds, okay? So wherever that staff member is, they can call for help, okay? And then we also have the audio and visual notifications. So for those campus-wide incidents, those campus-wide alerts, we have the audio and visual cues, so no matter who you are, no matter where you are, you will see or hear that call for action. So everybody responds appropriately, uniformly, and very, very quickly, no matter where you are, in or outside of the building, okay? I'll get into how this works in just a second, but that kind of sets the table for what we're gonna talk about. So the badge, easy to use, right? We all press the badge. There's two main uses for the badge. There's a staff alert and there's a campus-wide lockdown, okay? We're gonna talk about the staff alert first. That is 99% of the time, that's why the badge is used. So it's for that localized incident that's too great for one person to handle. So you see some of the examples there of an escalated behavior issue, perhaps a fight, medical emergency. You know, we see this being used in a lot of different ways all the time. Earlier this year, there was a child on the playground that choked on a rock, and they used the badge to call for help. We've had a student that had a seizure in a gym, and instead of trying to reach for the phone or the walkie, they pressed the badge, called for help, okay? So this is used in a number of different ways, and we see it being used every single day. But again, 99% of the time, it's for the staff alert. We can go ahead and press that next one one more time. Thank you. Alright, so what happens when you do call for help? Well, just like you guys tried it just before, you press it three times, alright? And it will vibrate in your hand, that lets you know that that alert was sent. And when that alert gets sent, if you go ahead and press through a few times here. There we go. So a few things happen, all simultaneously. Number one, that alert gets sent to campus responders. So as I mentioned before, each one of your campuses is gonna designate a campus responder. It's gonna be a group of folks, typically it's the principal, assistant principal, school resource officer, perhaps a counselor. It's usually the folks that are carrying the walkies, talkies in the first place, right? So they will be alerted two different ways. They're gonna be alerted on the desktop, and they're gonna be alerted on their mobile. They're gonna see a map. A map is gonna automatically pop up if they're at their computer. It's gonna be a screen takeover. And like I said before, they're gonna see who's calling for help and exactly where they're located, alright? And this alert's gonna pop through, similar to what you would hear like for a severe weather alert with maybe a flash flood warning, or like an amber alert, okay? So it's gonna push through, even if a person's phone's on vibrate or on silent, or they're not in the building, they're gonna get alerted. They're gonna know that somebody at their building needs help, okay? I don't know if this sound is hooked up right for you. Not loud, but I think you got the idea there. So it's gonna, it's gonna come through like that, desktop and mobile. And if you can see on the right-hand side of the screen there, it'll say staff alert. And then just below that, it's a little bit lighter because of the projection, but it'll tell you who's calling for help, okay? Now, on the other side of the coin, the campus lockdown. You hope you never have to use it, but it's kind of like that built-in insurance policy. It's there if you need it. The great thing about our Crisis Alert is that folks are familiar with the badge. They know how to use it, they know why to use it. So this isn't just that go nuclear button that sits on the shelf and you hope you never have to use it. If you should have to call for a lockdown, folks know how to use it, okay? One more time there. Alright, you know, we've had a couple of incidents lately, or I should say of late, where, you know, this campus-wide lockdown came into play recently, a couple of weeks ago, at one of our schools down in Florida. They had a visitor come up and try to break into the building during school hours. Said he was being chased by someone with a gun and was trying to get into the building. A staff member from the district actually was walking up behind this person as this was happening. She grabbed her badge and, you know, just very casually pressed the alert for a campus-wide lockdown. And in a matter of seconds, the SRO and some other folks were there to take that person into custody. So those are the type of situations we see, again, not here every day, but where we see that campus-wide lockdown or that need for it coming into play, okay? So what happens when that campus-wide lockdown is called for? Well, we tell the staff to just keep clicking the badge until you see and hear lockdown. We don't want to have them thinking to press it a certain number of times, did I press it enough, did I not? Just keep pressing until you see and hear lockdown. Because what you see up on the screen is all gonna happen all in a matter of seconds, simultaneously, okay? So we have these beacons. We put these in every single room throughout the buildings, alright? Even outside over your exterior doors. We've got auditory cues, so there's gonna be a pre-recorded message that comes over the intercom. All the desktops for your staff members will show lockdown, okay? That call for help will still go to your campus responders, letting them know that somebody just called for a campus lockdown and where they're located. But now, we're also gonna reach out to Mr. Walmsley and Preston and other district administrators, letting them know that a campus-wide lockdown was just called. And we also have the ability to, if you guys would choose, have a call go right to first responders. So you could have police heading over here in a matter of moments, show the campus lockdown being called, okay? Again, all this happens all in a matter of seconds, all in parallel with you pressing that button. And just to give you a look at what that looks like, again, keep clicking the button until you see and hear lockdown.
Lockdown alert. Immediately lock your doors. Turn off the lights. Stay out of sight.
Hopefully you can hear that, but obviously that would be a little bit louder. This was in a, going over the school intercom. But the other great thing about this is everything you see here is customizable, so going back to your emergency procedures, protocols, things like that, it can say what you want it to say. The lockdown screens can show what you want it to and what not.
Any interject here?
Yes.
This is one of the features for me that I was very impressed with, because we have heard from our staff often, particularly those that are in large areas or might have been outside with the kids on the field or banned their playing, they didn't hear the announcement.
Right.
The visual cues is what to let them know something's going around. Food service, there's oftentimes, they're cooking in the kitchen, pots and pans and noises, and they don't always hear that PA announcement. And so this is one of the selling features for me in terms of why this is a great system for all of our staff to have, so.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Walmsley. I mean, you talk about your bathrooms, your hall, your, you know, out of your hallways that are, you know, not typically being used or whatnot, we're putting these strobes everywhere.
So if we're outside, say the van's outside practicing on their practice field, and someone pushes for a lockdown, the only visual they're gonna get are gonna be the lights on the outside?
Correct. So there's a, yeah.
Okay.
There's a, these strobes will go over every exterior door.
Okay.
But then also wherever there would be a speaker, they would hear that as well, too.
Okay. So it's three, three pushes if there's a fight in the lunchroom?
Yep.
I continue to push?
Yes.
And that makes it greater?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Because if, think about it, you're probably reacting and panicking, so you just, you're not counties, that's why.
Absolutely.
Eight clicks would trigger the lockdown.
Okay.
And if it's 12 or whatever, it's still locked.
We don't like to really coach that, because we don't want any folks thinking about that.
Right.
We just say keep clicking it.
Right.
But yes, it is, once you get to eight consecutive clicks, that's what will initiate a lockdown.
Okay. And then staff will be notified on their mobiles as well? Is that what you were saying?
No, staff will, your staff members throughout the building, they'll be notified with the audio and visual cues.
Okay, so just what you just just told us now?
So, yeah, from the, you know, their own desktops.
Their desktop.
The strobes and the intercom.
Okay.
Yep. Now, for, Mr. Walmsley, if you could hit it one more time, please. Thank you. Now, there is some software for it as well, too. So number one, and this is, I want to be very clear, because, you know, the system is all about the badge for your staff. It's truly the easiest way to call for help. Now, for your campus responders, they will have this software on their phones. Number one, that's how the maps come up. Number two, this is also a way to initiate other sort of emergency codes in your school. So let's say perhaps there was a gas leak at one of your buildings, and you guys needed to evacuate. You could also, you could put the building into an evacuation. Have the strobes flash green, let's say, to exit the building. The appropriate messages would come over the intercom and whatnot as well, too. Lockout, let's say that there was a police situation in the area. You have business as usual on the inside, right, but nobody's coming in or out of the building. You could put the building into a lockout. Another great feature, we've actually seen this come into play before, is let's say that Preston's talking to the McComb sheriff, or Mr. Walmsley gets on tip that something's taking place, without even reaching out to one of your principals, he could actually put one of those buildings into a lockdown or a lockout with just a couple clicks of the button. Finally, the last way that we see the platform being used, again, for the campus responders, is your drills. So you guys are also able to load your drills to the system, and you're able to run your drills, your required drills.
The system works with our new PA system and CLAS, so they all intertwine, so it's not an additional, it's all part of existing system.
So when it goes into lockdown, those screens?
Those are going off in the classroom, it's coming off on that PA system.
Perfect.
Except.
Because if you're in the hallway, you could, yeah, you're gonna see it.
Could we mount the lights to the outside of the building in any way, like in key areas, like we were talking about football field or where?
Say it again, anything else?
Is there any alert system that could be mounted outside in case there are some of those facility areas to let people know when they're out there?
Well, you're gonna have it on the outside of doors, so we'll have it on the outside. So if you are on the playground, we just staff, this is where it's coming from. The door is going by the football field. We can check, the one thing I'm not sure that we gotta finalize is, like on the press box, because we have internet there, can we hook it into?
Oh, yeah, maybe.
I don't know the distance on that one.
Yeah, it would be covered.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because I look at this, and I'm thinking of all the staff that are outside of the traditional classroom. You've got the PE classes that are outside. You have, in some cases, Mrs. Kaganak, who's back all alone in that wing for a good chunk of her day. You have the teachers that are down in the weight room. If something happens in there, something with a student, you could easily activate it, and it notifies the team there's where to go and what needs, that there's a problem and who's calling for it. So it's a quick response and notification system.
I know Sherry had a question.
I teach preschool, so I'm always thinking, what would those kids do? If a kid pushes this exit, like if he just grabs it and starts pushing, once they know what these are about, you might get a kid that does that in elementary. But what can you, what happens if it goes into that lockdown alert? Like, how quickly can you stop it?
It's one of our drills. Like they do when they pull the fire alarm, which sometimes we have to do. We then continue it, make sure everything's clear, and we count it as one of our drills.
So when, yeah, when a situation like that happens?
That's the simplest version of it.
Your campus responders, they're the ones that actually, so when a situation does happen, does take place, you actually have to close that out on our system. So we actually log the events on our system. Another feature, that you can go back and look to see what's happening in your schools. But just to kind of follow what you asked, is that campus responder can just close out that situation very quickly. And just move on.
Thanks. I can go down and check on you and if you're okay.
And those are things that we do deal with at the elementary school, particularly in the preschool, whether it's a pull the fire alarm or various aspects.
Any other questions?
I do have questions, but are we, are we at question time? Or do you have some more?
Yeah, no, this is just a screen to show you a different emergency code that, you know, to be broadcast, and I think that's it.
Okay, yeah, okay. I just, I would, because we're trying to wait until then, but.
Yeah.
So how many districts are using this now? And have there been any reviews? I know that you had mentioned the one.
Yep.
Can you start off with how this was created, why the Florida?
Yeah, yeah, so.
And then answer the question.
I wanted to be respectful of my time given, so I kind of hopped right into it. But yeah, just, so Centix has been around for about five years.
Okay.
We're based out of Atlanta, and we've had really our growth from the southeast. So we actually partner with over 80% of the schools in Georgia and close to 30% of the schools in Florida. A lot of our Florida growth, or I shouldn't say our Florida growth, is a result of what's called the Lissa's Law. It's legislation that was passed, if you haven't heard of it, it's legislation that was passed from the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Tranch. One of the young women who lost her life, her mother put forth some legislation that essentially said anybody on a Florida campus should have the ability to somehow, some way, call for help. So we are actually the only approved wearable badge in the state of Florida. So Lissa's Law and legislation like that, it is spreading around the country. But again, to Mr. Walmsley's point, that's kind of where we've seen a lot of our growth from the southeast. But this sort of technology, this platform, it's very new to Midwest, and so we've just and so we've just really started growing in Michigan within the past year. Fourth branch just came on in May, I think it was, um, so yeah, you guys would be the second district in Michigan to come board, but we have, we're closing in on, um, about twenty-five hundred schools across the country, um, and, you know, with hundreds of districts and protecting.
Okay, awesome.
I could say that I know the county and our, and our safety response meetings that happened prior to Thanksgiving, but there is an interest to have this looked at at the county level.
Okay.
Just because we oftentimes will do things as a county, but the ability to have any staff member activated is what really interests.
So the reviews though, that you've gotten back are, are all positive? Like anything that, I maybe don't wanna share, I guess, but like anything that may be a negative, like at all, that we could maybe?
We, we have a ninety-nine percent retention rate.
Okay.
Regul rate.
Okay, alright, yeah.
So, yeah, the reviews have been really good, um, you know, really the only, the only unfortunate thing right now is that we need more folks to be able to help, like, you know, install and roll this out.
Okay.
Cause we're rolling this out.
Share the rest.
Um, you know, other than that, I mean, the reviews have been really positive. And they, and the, and the, the fact is, is fortunate is that you see the, the returns on this, day one, meet one, because it really goes into play, these are things that are already happening in your schools, but it's, it's making that communication more clear and that response that much faster, so.
So what happens if a staff member loses their badge?
So think of this almost like a hotel key. Um, you can activate and deactivate a badge in a matter of ten, fifteen seconds.
Okay, so we'll have staff here that can do that, they don't have to contact the company?
Correct, yes, yes. So you'll have a badge manager at each one of your sites and so they can go right into the system and deactivate the badge.
And then I do, I know we talked about the false, um, alarms a little bit earlier, but I, I don't, I don't know that you can answer this, but maybe Mr. Walmsley can. Um, are we charged as a district for like any false alarms with the fire departments or any, anything like that?
We've never, see, I mean, I'm looking, you ever, I don't, we've never received a bill since I've been here.
Okay.
Um, well, we've had a couple very close ones, particularly at the elementary school, um, you know, they've come in and they have, uh, given us some suggestions, like they've, we've put covers on, um, pole, the pole stations to, to make it another step for a little guy to, to pull. So we've done like that as we've had situations occur.
Okay.
Or, or we have students that are very, um, active and explore and so when they move to the next grade, we will put those covers in, to be proactive if they're moving to a different wing of the building.
So so far, no, we have not had any?
We've not been charged.
Cause I'm more concerned about not necessarily a student getting hold of it, but even just a teacher, like, or any staff member who's witnessing something like a seizure or whatnot could just push to, you know, cause they're just reacting and pushing so many times. So if they do that, um, and it does go into a lockdown, that doesn't, so authorities are not automatically then contacted, somebody here has to still do that from the building, is that correct?
No.
No.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. So, so that's gonna be a district decision.
Okay.
Whether or not you guys want that call to go immediately.
Okay.
There are some districts that will say, yes, any sort of campus lockdown, we want the authorities to know and we want to bring in the cavalry.
Okay.
Others will say, no, we want that to come to us first and then they'll decide if we need to bring in backup, so, um, totally up to you guys.
Okay.
But, you know, I do wanna mention too, that it, it does need to be, um, consecutive presses, so if you were to press it three times and then stop for a second and then press it another three times, it's not adding to, you know, it would be three, then six, then another two, so SB eight consecutive.
Okay.
That's the, yeah.
I will tell you this, whenever we've had situations that have occurred, whether it's a gas leak that happened in a building or whatever, um, our team afterwards gets together, it's okay, what could we have done differently or to improve on?
Mm-hmm.
Um, for me, I want the authorities there because they're the one, I'm not the expert fighting the gas leak, I want the, the people who are the experts fighting, I mean, I can smell it and I can think I know where it's at, but they're, they know what they're looking for. So we have, uh, tried to train ourselves that anytime we're doing something like that or we have a situation, let's get the police, the fire here, let's get it all clear before we're gonna bring children back. We've had the cases where we've had to move kids to a different building, um, and if you think about it, and I'll use the example, it happened, I believe it was last year at the elementary school, that it was early in the morning and there was a gas leak and we had to move the kids to the middle school. The time it takes, you know, I got a gas leak, I'm calling this person, them calling over to press them, them calling over to, we're losing a lot of time. This system activates and we all know immediately. Um, I always tell the administrators, I should be the last person you're calling in the chain because I need you to get the people who are gonna be there first.
Sure.
But at least it, it puts me in that loop to be aware of what's going on in the building. Um, again, I think of a classroom, you've got a student with a medical emergency and you know, hopefully one of the windows open because of air conditioning, but if they had a bee sting, you know, I did ask, can these be on buses? No, they can't be on buses. I would love to be able to, um, but they go outside of the perimeter of the, of the campus, so, um, but yeah, just to get that activation going, cause time is of the essence at that point.
So the, how long is, how long would our contract be? Like what kind of contract? Cause I saw on the agenda that we're, we're.
It's, what I'm, what I'm recommending to the board is a five-year contract, to approve it over five years. Yeah, the first year, there's a setup cost, um, I don't have it in front of me, and then it's approximately eight thousand a building, about twenty-four thousand dollars for year two, year three, year four, and year five. But the first year is a little bit more. And we will be using the school safety funds that the legislature allocated where we pay for them.
So year two, three, four, and five is about?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four thousand. Okay.
Eight thousand a building.
That's not per building, that's the entire district?
That's the whole campus.
Okay. And Ryan, we'll have the safety funds all those years for five years?
The funds that we have are, are, will cover this.
Okay.
Tammy and I are checking with the auditors if we can pay it all upfront.
Got it.
For the five years out of those dollars or if it's gotta be paid for the year that we're using. That's the only thing, we don't have an answer yet to.
So you found this?
No, uh, Mr. Walmsley did.
Okay.
I was at a superintendent's conference and, you know, you had a lot of vendors there and I had had a conversation with Molly Shack probably a month before, asking about getting a strobe light. I remember a conversation with Mr. News in the gym about getting a strobe light to notify. And when we put this system in, that was the intent. Now our gyms, our large space areas, the final clocks are not installed, they're, they were still on back orders, so they were larger. With that said, when I went to the booth and I saw the strobe light, that's what kinda got me there. So I came back and I talked to Preston or I said, I just set it up. I said, Preston, you gotta come see this. His, his mind began to turn on all the possibilities that this will help us with to become more efficient and get that notification out there. So that's, that's how it started.
Oh, okay. Just from someone, I've worked in a school building for many, many years, this is, I, it's just tremendous, what a, a great feeling as an employee, a safety and security feeling to have this and just, I think this is outstanding.
Uh, one of the, one of the things I really liked about it is, like right now, our, our means of communication are primarily the walkie-talkies, um, is, as somebody that goes from building to building, okay, gotta change my channel, change my channel, change my channel. Um, but also that it comes to my phone because they may come on walkie-talkies, they press them, they're in a situation in the four corners and if I don't catch it right away, cause it's down here on my hip, if I don't catch it right or I'm, I'm in a different building on this, I don't get that notification and it's gone as soon as the radio calls up or this pops up on my phone or my computer and it stays there till we close it out.
Okay.
And I, and in my head, I'm thinking worst case scenario that hopefully will never happen here, but I'm thinking of in our building, you look at the elementary school and that gymnasium, very few people are down there, right? And if someone were to penetrate the building, those people who don't have kids or food or, they could activate a lock and get the notification out there as quickly as possible. I think Aleah Caganak in the high school here, that whole wing, she could be down there, Stacy's got s, at least three hours of the day by herself in that, that whole wing or the science wing down there.
Well, even the gym, if you're in teaching gym.
The gym, the weight room, et cetera.
Or the band's playing, they're not gonna hear more than likely, cause I know, I've been told, so if they're seeing something flashing and something's coming up there, you know, that's a lot, a lot better.
Being a teacher that has broken up a fight before, I mean, um, we have ways now of using the phones to alert the office, but if me as a teacher, I'm out the hallway and there's a situation going on, I can hit that three times, get help on the way and also I'm there to deal with it. I don't have to go, hey, student, go to the office, and like freeze it up.
Right, exactly.
So.
Are they, does, does that track them everywhere they go without pat, pressing the button?
It does not. So actually the badge is only being, or that I should say, the person is only being tracked when the badge is pressed.
Is ignited, activated.
Yep. When you're off campus, so if you're out to lunch, uh, it's the weekend or whatnot, badge doesn't work.
So Steph would be taking the badges then home, I would assume?
We would do it similar to what we do with the, um, they assign it to staff, badges, the badges to staff. And then we have a set of keys in every building for substitutes, and we would add these badges onto those substitutes, so when we have substitutes, they take the keys and the badge and they go with them to wherever they're at.
So one, and if there is ever a lost badge, then we can deactivate the badge, um, and then?
Issue them.
Issue them a new one and I assume like it's a cost to do that?
So we provide additional badges from the get-go.
Okay.
So we, we give you, um, how many staff members-ish?
Two, two-twenty.
Okay, so we give you two-twenty plus ten percent.
Okay.
So that usually takes care of your subs, your, your lost badges, um, whatnot.
Okay.
And actually made me think of something. So one other thing I wanted to mention too is, the badge is, is stays with your person, so for your staff members like Preston or other folks that travel from building to building, it works no matter what campus you're on. So, um, you know, if you're, uh, you know, at a different campus, the president's gonna know that it's you and what campus you're on and alert those appropriate campus responders.
So even if I don't teach in that building and I'm, happen to be in a different building, it doesn't matter, it's gonna recognize where I am, where I need help.
That's correct.
If the badge is assigned to the person, just like our door badges are assigned to the person.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, I apologize.
Nope.
So is there, my, so these are a lot like the key badges, is there a way for them to be both or no?
Not our current system.
Okay, okay.
What, what I envision with these is, it'd be like Mr. Walmsley's lanyard where you would have your, your crisis alarm badge and then your key badge and your ID badge over it.
Okay.
All together right there.
Right. I was like, wouldn't it be cool though if it was online?
Then we print the pictures on the front.
Right, there you go.
The system out there.
Okay.
So if it's, if it gets lost, there's no way to find it?
Uh, no, not like an iPhone, uh.
Right, like a find it, like a?
No.
No, we would just log in the system and deactivate that badge and then issue a new badge.
And then, um, we, so we could, we can do drills though, right, with the badge? Like, is that something that we would be doing, scheduling drills to happen? Like, do we, we currently do lockdown drills now, I would assume, right?
Correct. We have, we have X number of tornado, uh, or inclement weather, fire and lockdown that we have to do each year.
Right, so like, would we, could we implicate, implement, I'm sorry, this badge into that, that drill?
That would be, that would be what I, my charge to Preston is to integrate so people are used to using, using the badge, so that if they have to activate, they know how to activate.
Right. Um, yeah, and that would be something, um, I would like to do in the summer if we, we choose to go with these, use a professional development day to come in, explain it to the staff, walk through how it works, um, but then implement that into some of our drills, um, like a lockdown drill, we can trigger it from there. Um, the other one I would like to do for the crisis response team is add a, we call it a crisis drill or a staff alert drill, um, for that team, okay, like maybe I coordinate with a teacher, I say, Miss Mashawn, hey, at this, this time during the day, can you click three times? We're gonna simulate an event there. If she's at the elementary school, Mr. Gibson, Ms. Manguni, um, anybody else?
Yeah, there's always somebody, yeah.
Go down, okay, they gotta, they gotta find where the alert is and get there and what's our response time, just like we would do with any other drill.
I would also do this similar with our first responders like we did when we did the drills a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
They wanna see how they can be, become better at what they're doing, so.
Right.
And that would be, that would be something to test with the lockdown drill, trigger the lockdown drill with this and then make sure that that works alerting the law enforcement.
Right. So if we had a crisis, going back to that, let's be our crisis team, how would we, would the team get notified? Could we get, where the team just got notified?
You, you set it up to who is your building team?
Got it.
So they're, they're computer, they're.
Got it, okay. And then, um, last, last question is probably actually for Mr. Walmsley, um, and I kinda thought about it, um, I'm sure that there is one, but I'm not, I'm curious what it is, like if, if the band is practicing outside or there are people outside and we do go in lockdown, we don't want them to come inside the building, like how do we do that? What's our normal protocol for that?
It's a great question because we are meeting tomorrow regarding having some of those conversations.
Oh, okay.
Because as we have been putting, I'm gonna call it outdoor classrooms, like when you go in the middle school in the front where they're led to, we got, the idea is that staff possibly use it, where are, where is their location if they are in a crisis? We are, we're working on that.
Okay. And there are, there are some in place, like I know at the high school, they go to the middle school. You know, the problem would be is if the whole district was locked down, where would they go? Right, okay, awesome. I'm glad we're working on that. Any other questions?
I had a question. I just caught what you were saying in passing, you know, that the company is growing, how have they anticipated the growing pains or heaven forbid if something not work or is there like a backup to a backup or how, what's the projection for that?
Yeah, so all of, uh, if I'm hearing you right, um, we monitor all the hardware, um, so we typically might have, as I said, know something is offline before you guys do, cause the way that the system is set up, it's a mesh network, so other parts of the system will pick up if there's any lapse.
Sure.
If you will. Um, badges are monitored as well too, the, the schools get weekly health reports on the badge health as well, so.
Do they have bat, now that you say that, do they have batteries or how does it constantly communicate?
They do, they do. The battery is about a, about a five-year battery life on the, uh, badges.
Oh, oh, gotcha.
But that health life is important, cause you could, you could get it, whether it's an automatic report that's sent to you or you could run it, it's okay, these badges are near and around.
Sure.
Yeah.
What if it's washed?
That is a very good question.
Does, the badges do work if, if your hand, now I don't know if you're soaking them underwater for long periods of time, I don't know if we've done that sort of testing, but the badges do work if your hands are wet or dirty or, or anything like that. or dirty or anything like that.
Want anybody else? Thank you. Thank you for coming out this evening. Did you get these back yet?
Yes.
We passed our sound. Thank you so much. Okay, our next item on our agenda is our human growth and development.
So Preston went down, we relieved Becky, so Becky's coming, so you can come on up.
Well, and I was, perfect timing to be here for that because my close counterpart at MISD is our school safety consultant.
Nancy.
You'll probably know her. So I was texting her like, "I'm so happy I'm here."
I sent Nancy all the stuff and she wants to set this up, so.
Yep, so.
This is Sarah Orr. She is from the MISD consultant. So she's here tonight and Becky will be joining her. Renee is out sick tonight, so that's why she's not here. Sarah was out sick last night. So we're going to talk about human growth and development, what currently we do and what if the board wants to add or go into a different direction, what we would need to do. So I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Do you want to start? Yeah, I guess so. So currently, right now, we are an absentee only district for our curriculum. So we're teaching in the fifth, eighth and the tenth grade levels, just the HIV and AIDS component. There's also an opt-out letter if parents or students choose to opt out of that lesson. It's a one lesson for each grade level. So that's what we're currently doing, is the minimum.
Which is required.
Yes.
Yeah, so that is not.
Yeah, of course. So Sarah's here to talk about different options. I know some people have questions about various curriculums and so on. So she's here to discuss that and I can answer any questions based on what we're currently doing if anyone has any questions about that, which is none.
Thank you for having me. So tonight really, I just want to share with you some of the steps that you would have to take if you want to look into integrating reproductive health or end or puberty lessons back into the curriculum. Because it is kind of quite a process to get that going. So I'll kind of run through those. And I think where you all shared with this document that at any point if you want to look through it, I can answer questions or later you look through it, you can always email me or contact Becky with other questions. But should you decide that you want to add either puberty or reproductive health to the curriculum, the first thing that you would want to do and effectively is actually already the reproductive health supervisor, but you have to have reproductive health supervisor identified. And then you need to develop your sex ed advisory board, also known as the CF. And it is required to have a board together, which is they are responsible for a lot of the actions going forward and bringing those recommendations to the board to approve those items. And there are some guidelines on who is on your sex ed advisory board. We're required, and it is in the document, but you're required to have like a member of the clergy. We're required to have parents of students that attend the districts. You can, you have to have school staff. And at least half of your board has to be made up of parents. And you have to have members of the community. So how large or small your board is is sort of up to your district. And being a smaller district, your board may be smaller than some of our larger school districts that we see. But there is specific makeup of who is on the board to help they make those decisions. And parents actually have the largest vote. So when you go to vote on curriculum, the parents have the majority, fifty percent vote. And then all of the other people have a smaller vote, so that we are hearing the vote of the community and parents on what you're moving forward with. So you have your sex ed advisory board. And during the, when you come together to meet, you would come up with your bylaws, talk about how frequently you guys are going to meet, how your membership's going to be made up, what your application is going to look like going forward. And we have samples of that for other people that want to join the sex ed advisory board. And then from there, you would start looking at developing the definition of sex education or reproductive health for the district and deciding what that language looks like. And then you can start looking at curriculum. And we have a variety of curriculum that we can recommend. Obviously, all what you guys decide is based on your district's decision. But we have a variety of different options available that are all evidence-based and have been reviewed. And then from there, you would have to host two public hearings for community members and parents to come in at a designated time to review the curriculum, watch videos, the videos of the videos associated with and provide feedback and comment on that. And then once you have gone through that, then you can bring it to board for approval. So, and then from there, the teachers would have to, any of your teachers that are teaching HIV, which the ones that are already doing that have to be certified every three to five years. We recommend the three years. We do that through the MISD where they come and take an HIV certification class. And then making sure that your teachers that are going to teach the reproductive health portions of puberty have the right endorsement. So they have to either be health educators, PE or consumer science endorsed. So you have specific teachers that can teach that health component. And then before teaching a lesson, obviously sending out your opt-out letters and notifications to your parents. They know that the reproductive health units are coming up and have that option to opt their students out if they wish to do so. So it's kind of a long process, but we do that because we want parents involved in being our partners in education. There's no, so if you were to move forward with that and wanting to explore some of that, like I would say realistically, it would probably be, you know, next school year before you would start implementing any of that curriculum because it would be a step on the process to get your advisory board up and running and looking at some of that, those curriculum options. So that's sort of the process, but what else can I answer for you?
Who can teach it?
Who can teach it? So yeah, the, I want to make sure to say, yes.
MA.
I want to make sure to tell you the right endorsement. So they have to, they would be health or PE teachers or family and consumer science endorsed educators.
I know health is MA because I have MA.
Yeah, MA, yes.
I know MA is.
I can tell you that.
Yes, and there.
MX, MA, KH, and I believe we have four, four teachers that have that certification.
Yeah, and you can bring in special guests if you wanted to do something like that, but that just needs to be written in that's what you're doing. And then your classroom teacher needs to be in the classroom during those guest presentations if it was like coming from the health department or something.
Can I ask you just a couple of, we went through, we had the conversation. How many districts in McComb County are absentee-based districts?
Other than you guys, I think just one. And yes.
Out of 21 districts, there are two that are absentee-based. All the other ones have some type of.
Are doing something, yeah, puberty and reproductive health.
Is this a class or is this a series of lessons over a course of a day or week? Or what's typically what districts do?
So most districts, and my recommendation, if you are going to follow something like Michigan Model for Health, it's a comprehensive health curriculum, so it is done over a series of weeks. But it is, not all of that is just on reproductive health. It really focuses on, you know, personal safety, setting boundaries, refusal skills, which they're going to use across, you know, the continuing mother that's refusal for drugs and alcohol or, you know, personal body safety. So it's comprehensive, so it is over a course. My recommendation instead of like a one day or one week is do that comprehensive lesson, but only a very short part of that is actually like anatomy and reproductive health.
So some of the things that I think of as we're going through this is if it's going to be part of a course, it's a redesign of several existing courses. So we're looking to just take our K5 PE classes part of that, which is they're currently eight-week session blocks or if we did once a year, once a week, redesigning how much is PE, how much is health, depending on the grade level, reproductive. When we get to middle school, not all students take middle school six, seven, eight PE. They may take four, five. So we'd have to redesign it, does that become part of a class that's required of all students, a portion of their day? So when she brought up it, it's a process. A redesign of course is going to affect scheduling, which is, you know, it could be a phase in if you guys want to look at, at doing, introducing this, as we, we'd have to redesign courses.
Yeah.
Or adding courses and eliminating. Because we only have certain people that are certified to teach this. So either we're pulling them out of their existing course and subbing it for them to teach a week, if we went down that road, if it was a week-long class.
And I was going to say, and you don't have to do the whole thing. You could do just a week long or, you know, whatever you guys think is appropriate. But you're right, you have to make sure it's in somewhere.
Do we already have a board from, like, is that board still?
They have not, they have not met, and I would ask.
And I can speak on that on years ago. We did an advisory board, I think Mr. Shahn was part of that.
That was.
But I think over time, you know, we decided to do the absentee-based curriculum. So there's no need to have a board at that time. So obviously, if we're looking at changing the curriculum, that would be the need to bring that back.
Yes, I was wondering, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering why we went away from it, I guess. Because my question to you was going to be, so what do they teach under the Michigan Model? What do they teach to the elementary? What's the basic?
So Michigan Model actually doesn't have the puberty portion of it in elementary. They do the HIV lessons. And then the rest of the, the Michigan Model for elementary is more about, you know, building social awareness and those type of skills. So for the puberty for elementary, we either recommend puberty, the wonder years, or there's one called the three Rs, right responsibility and respect. And then in middle school and high school, that's where Michigan Model has.
Got it.
Where they're talking more about anatomy.
Right.
And reproductive.
And is that where we, we talk about the use of birth control or?
Yes, and so, you know, in that it does outline like things that you have to teach, but as a district, you can decide how much of that you're going to teach. Like you don't have to teach about the use of condoms, for example. But there are things that you have to teach in terms of consent and the age of consent and things like that. But you don't have to teach some of the other things.
So we could pick and choose that curriculum. We just have to make sure.
Whatever board we have.
Yeah, the board, the board.
And they make the recommendations.
Right, to us. They could pick and choose.
Yes.
Can this board adopt something that the advisory board didn't recommend or vice versa?
No, I think it needs to be a consensus. I think ultimately your sex ed advisory board.
Is the determining, and this is more of the approval body of what the recommendation is.
Yes, so if they comment you guys aren't thrilled with it, they would go back to the drawing board and come up with something else. But ultimately, they have, they're making that decision for you guys.
Are you aware of anything for the gender ideology? Is there anything, a piece in that, for that somewhere within?
In any part, any curriculum that's out there right now?
Um.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Because I mean, the three Rs are probably pretty, you know what I'm saying? And that starts at an elementary level. Just probably broaden it more, you know?
Yeah, and it's more just about respect and responsibility and nothing specific about gender identity.
Dysphoria, nothing like that?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do you know anything about the proposal three that just passed and how this plays a role in that?
I do. I'm aware of proposal three that just passed, but I don't think that plays a role in this. Within the laws of the guides with Michigan MBE, the districts you cannot teach about, we're talking about referring students for abortion or using abortion as a means of birth control within any of your curriculum. So you won't find that in any other curriculum nor are teachers allowed to teach about that.
Even though, didn't the new law or the new proposal state you could?
Well, we haven't heard anything, and in terms of our.
What about Minder's fundamental right to reproductive freedom, separate and distinct from his or her parents? Where they, the parent can, does not have to be a part of saying opt-in for these programs? That the child can just decide on their own?
Opt-in for the class.
Whatever the program, yes. Like you said, opt-in or opt-out rather.
Right now, we have not heard any difference in that with education because parents have authority of their students' educational rights until they're 18. So just like they need to call them in, you know, if they're sick or whatever, they are the ones also that opt them in or out of these portions. And we have not been able to have anything different.
And the parent, the parents make up more than half of the board.
Right, yes.
So do you see what I'm saying? So like whatever they say that they want the curriculum to be, we either approve or don't.
Yes, right. And one of the other things I would recommend, and I was talking to Becky about it, and I think you guys did it several years ago, but doing a community survey. You know, having maybe that's your starting point with your sex ed advisory board, is doing a community survey with your community members and your parents about what they're interested in and what they hope to see involved in the curriculum and using that source too. Because it really, like you said, half of your board is going to be parents and they're kind of going to like to talk about what they think is important for their students.
What's a normal board size? I know you said it can differ from district, but like, I don't know, somebody can speak on how many people are on the board before or do you remember?
Oh, I was on the board. Let me see. So we had one from each building, so that's three.
One parent from each building?
Well, that's our administrator. So one individual from the district.
Okay.
Then we had two local, we had a priest and we had someone from, I think it's a Lutheran church on the board. We then had our parents on the board. We had like a nurse or a doctor or something.
Yeah, I would say we had about 10.
Yeah.
I was going to say 10 is what sticks in my head.
That we had on there.
And I would say. Students have to be on the board? That was interesting.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and I would say that we do the thing to be on the board too.
Students from each building?
No. Yeah, and then if you live one or two. And I know one of the recent meetings I went to a couple of weeks ago in their district, it's actually one of the parents that's also on the board has two high school daughters and they're, they're the student representatives. But typically, there's two or three students. And sometimes they're society students or, you know, it doesn't matter where they're from, but.
Being that we can't, we can't probably get this rolling if we decide to do that until next year, like is there anything stopping, I guess, us from doing like a reproductive health type assembly? I guess, I don't want to call it, like, you know what I mean, like, you still have to have that.
It doesn't matter what kind of study.
By the board?
Health advisor board.
Yeah, health advisor. We cannot.
Yeah, so what I would recommend, after you guys do bring them and think about it, if you want, are interested in this, this year, you can start meeting together your sex ed advisory board. Start meeting, talking about things. But I would say I just don't feel like there's enough time that you would roll anything out until next year. But certainly, there's time this year to start looking at this, doing a community survey, gathering that information from your, your community members and your parents.
Can I ask you a question?
Wait, I'm trying to.
Sorry.
She's so tired to get in.
No, 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 it's to, I guess, from my standpoint, what was the whole point of this presentation? This, I, you wanted it on the agenda. So is this, as a board, we're, we're deciding to go in a different, when have we had that conversation?
That's what we're having now. We're getting informed. And so then we need to decide if that's where we want to go. If we want to change to what the district's doing right now. Okay, so this is just an informational piece for us.
Okay.
So we are aware of what we're currently doing and what's out there. So we can make an informed decision.
I mean, truly, for me, I mean, I have, my daughter's going through the changes of life right now. She hasn't had anything that has talked about puberty, hair growth, hygiene. I mean, by this point, by that age, there should have been. I mean, we're the only two districts that don't have a health class?
I'm not.
I mean, that's why, that is what it is in my mind.
Not two districts that have a health class, that's not a correct statement.
Okay.
There's only two districts that do the absentee.
For.
Right, I, I'm just, I'm just asking. This was put on the agenda and so we're having, we're talking about an advisory board and it'll be next year and all of that. And this is the first, so I'm just, I'm just trying to get in tune with, with what it is we're doing here because I'm a little confused.
So, so from our perspective administration, our goal was if you are interested as a board to put human growth and development, whatever you want to call it, sex ed, to understand it's not going to happen overnight. And it needs us tying to put our pieces and ducks in a row to get it, to come back to you. If the board is not, then we continue as we've been doing as an absentee and maybe it's a topic that's brought up later at a different point. But that, that's from our end, from at least Becky's and my perspective. Just give us direction on if this is something that you want to do.
All this was meant for informational too, so we want to have that discussion.
Just asking.
Definitely.
Yep. I personally feel this is something we should look into as a board and I would like to take steps and start back off the advisory board if possible. That's my personal opinion.
One question I had, I didn't read obviously through that whole handout bit by bit, but one of us could not be on that board, could they? Like we're parents within the district, but we can't be on.
It is not recommended just because you're at the cell phone, we'll have to approve it.
Yeah.
So yes, that's not recommended, but yes, I wouldn't recommend it.
And then do we as a board, you say there's a few different models. Do we have direction with that to give to our advisory board, like this is what we're thinking?
I mean, sure, you can, you know, sure.
Let them know we're as a board.
We were, or my friend in the southern district.
But I thought you said it all comes from the advisory board.
Yeah.
Yes, so it's not, it's not suggestions from the Board of Education. You're putting in a, you're putting an advisory board together because you want to change how we do our. But if you want to call the old fash. Should we say to them, "We're looking at the Michigan Model, et cetera, et cetera." You know, "We would like your input on that. That's what we as a board, you know, have."
I would think it'd be appropriate. Like for example, maybe you have a friend and they go to a neighboring district and you hear that they use a certain health curriculum. You could say, "I don't know anything about this, but they're using three Rs." The board, you know, the advisory board can say, "Sure, well, we have our list of curriculum to review, but maybe they'll do it or agree to."
Thank you. Thank you. But we're not guiding them.
No, exactly.
That's, that's the big key that I want everybody to understand. We're not guiding them.
Right, yes, they're going to make that decision and recommendation.
Who determines who is on the board?
Um, so the.
The advisory board.
The sex ed supervisor, the reproductive health supervisor is sort of the starting point. And then we have sample, districts use usually an application to send out to community members that are interested in doing that. We have some sample ones. And then from there, and to be honest, there's usually not overwhelming amount of people that want to be on that advisory board. So they're usually like, "Okay, we have five parents that are interested in doing this." So they're usually not breaking down the laws to do it. But ultimately, it's the supervisor.
You're asking, the number is harder.
Here's why I'm asking, is in our previous policies under Neola, this board had a policy that said, if we were teaching it, these are the membership that you're going to have, clergy kind of defined.
Yeah.
So the board sets that, but the superintendent or his or her designee picks the people, so okay, you're the clergy person, you're the parent elementary, you're the, through some type of, it can be an application process and so forth. So it's not the board picking the members, other than they, in our previous policy, they created the membership.
Right.
Titles.
Yes, and then it's spelled out, oh, the membership titles, but it's not the board that is spelling those people. Yes, it's this starting person and probably the staff that you identify that are going to be on the board, which are going to be your teachers that are teaching it probably or ultimately can be teaching.
But the state does identify the who has to be on the board?
Yes, yeah. So it's like the guidelines, yeah, like the clergy.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I got it.
I think you're responsible, just make sure you're following that guideline.
Yes.
Right.
Brian, do we have a, a health class right now that's like a whole?
It's a semester course at the high school and it's eighth grade at the middle school.
So it could be taught in there, possibly?
It, it could be if we wanted to incorporate.
I know it was around with my kids. I don't know if it was when it fizzled out, if my, all my kids got to the high school end of it, but I know middle.
So I'm going to build upon that question. Can the advisory board, if they, if they wanted to recommend, we're going to teach it, but it's going to be in a health class, where all kids get a health class in high school, or they have taken online, or in the middle school, you're opting into that class rather than all kids are getting it? Or if they do, if they go, we are going to teach it, do we have to provide an opportunity for all kids to have access to it?
I think you have to provide an opportunity for all students to have access to it, and then they can opt out, the parents can opt out if they don't want them to.
For that portion of the class, if they didn't want the reproductive or.
Yeah. Becky, do you know when it fizzled out? Like, do you know?
I don't remember being at all when I was here.
I don't recall.
There's obviously different superintendents.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think it was when Dr. Olson was here is when we did it. I said we had the advisory board.
I don't recall it, I don't know. I know I was here, so that was like.
But I know that just with some of the changeover, it just, you know, I had different people meeting and it just became, you know, I inherited it back during COVID. So when it came back, we did do a survey, but then we wanted to shut down, so we came back to the hygiene, so we have done the minimum, and, you know, I think, like Sarah said, getting the perception of our community, I think, is very important because it is a sensitive topic. And, you know, obviously what we choose to do, I think, we have to be very cognizant of what our parents need and want and make sure that we're not overstepping on them.
And I will, you know, I would say, we do offer the ISD, it's called Just Around the Corner for Girls, and so it's for fourth and fifth grade girls and their moms. We used to do it in person, but then we switched to virtual with COVID. And we usually have 50 or 60 girls on there with their moms where they're hearing about puberty, they watch a little video and then the girls can chat questions. And I will say, this most recent one that we did was probably the most immature group who had just very, very basic questions about everything puberty related. I do, I think that it's because they weren't getting a lot of it at school, you know, like even the basic hair growth or just some of those things that we hope that parents are talking to their kids about, and unfortunately I just think they're not always getting it. So if they're getting some basic here, we can build off of it or partner with parents to provide information to them on how to support them at home and that, but I just want to show that, could you mention that about the puberty piece? And I've noticed that since they haven't gotten at least any kind of difference in the girl maturity level with those courses, so.
One thing that I liked when we did have the whole committee and we were, we were doing it, and I felt it was really important, is that it provides our students with the process of how to make a good decision with the right information.
Yeah, informed decision.
Yes, an informed decision. Our kids are on the internet all the time and you, you know you can find whatever you want on it.
Yes.
So I really felt that was a really good piece to it, that we're teaching them that you need to check into this before you decide to go do this or do that. And that, that piece really, I felt was the important piece of that curriculum.
Yeah, and a lot of healthy relationships.
Correct, correct. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you. If you guys sign up for it, I'm always happy to come, if you were, talk about your advisory board, whatever you need from the ISD.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
At this time, do we want to give Mr. Wombley any direction or do we need further information? Does any board member need further information?
Okay, direction for what?
I would like to see them proceed instead of committing and get the curriculum going and going back to what we did.
Well, I would, before we do that, I would like to hear from Mr. Wombley about how that's going to look as far as scheduling and remodeling, like, you know what I mean? Because it sounds like, because we have to be locked on on that end before we can start getting, you know, saying, go ahead and get a board together.
And how about if we do, if we put together a survey?
I like that thought.
Do that first. Get, don't, don't just jump into, let's get something started, let's, let's do a survey. I, I agree with Sandy, there's, there's so much to this that is not just the class, the teaching and that, there's, there's all kinds of things involved in. I'd like to hear that too. I'd like to hear what does that, what does that look like?
Okay, so who puts the survey out? Because in listening to them, that would be like one step.
I would think that would be Ms. Borwick's job. I mean, that's, that's her job.
I would, Ms. Borwick and I work with, to make sure that it's obviously age appropriate, it's getting, I'm, I'm sure, I don't want to speak for you, we've got sample surveys and other.
We got samples from the group and then Mr. Wombley, I can even review it.
Right, okay. So would it be a survey to parents and?
And kids or students?
And dad, I would think, how far would it go?
Well, my recommendation at first is start with parents, if they want us to even be teaching this topic to their students in school.
I agree. Because you have to remember that the whole reason, the whole absence thing came from that's what.
It didn't come from the parent group. It came around because we no longer had a committee that was doing the curriculum. We just fell back to what we had to cover, which was the HIV stuff.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I would agree then, I also think, yeah, I would agree with the survey to the parents first because of, to see what the community wants.
Uh huh.
And then we need to, then we need to figure out how that's going to look, like, as far as scheduling and hours and teachers and whatnot.
If we could include also what topics the parents would like, I mean, when we're talking human growth and development, what topics specifically, which we could create a curriculum on and at what age would be dealt with?
I would, I would think that would come from the committee.
Yes.
That once you, if you got overwhelming parents that want, yes, I want to teach it, then when we get the advisory committee together, we say, okay, let's figure out what content in that committee. I think that's where.
They want to know what they're seeing, yes, let's teach, teach what? I mean, you have to give them the information, what, at least give them an options of, yes, if you, if my child were to, I'd like them to learn ABC in the checkbox.
Well, we may, we may be able to, to guide them to go on to the state, like, to look at the state.
Yeah, give that link or something.
There are some samples.
Yeah, I mean, that's all we really do because the.
And we need to make a clear.
Board for that particular curriculum is what is going to come up with it, but I mean, they have to follow the state guidelines.
We could just say they could include.
We need to be clear that this doesn't mean we're going to teach all of this.
Right.
That our board will base, and it's 50% of our parents will determine.
I don't know that we need to put that in the survey though.
You don't.
Because we have an opt-out letter that they will get if and when we get to this point. Do you see what I'm saying? Like.
It should be.
And then, and then we would have more information at that point. Maybe we could share with them curriculum once we're ready to send out an opt-out letter.
I think what board member Cunningham is a little worried about is that some people may be ultra-sensitive to the actual act of teaching sex.
The S E X word, and love how it says human growth and development.
Whereas reproductive is a different topic.
Hygiene and anatomy, that has nothing to do with the other part of it. So will the parents automatically think that that's what they're getting or not? So to have ideas of what this is actually going to include.
But we can't say what it's going to include.
Well, with the options maybe.
No, you can't even give options.
But you're doing a basic community survey. There's different levels, they have the Michigan standard, then they have the three, whatever that was.
How about if it's.
Could you give like little, like maybe a synopsis or an idea of what those programs may look like, and then the survey could say, would you be interested in teaching this, rather than just a blanket, are you interested in teaching sex education?
Well, we're not saying sex education.
How about if it's as basic as, you're putting in, Ms. Borwick said she's got stuff, but it's a basic that the, the district is looking into doing something different with how we teach.
Human growth and development.
Correct. And therefore we're, there is this community survey, that's what you start, because that's really what the conversation is, correct? That, that the board's talking about updating, I think maybe is a good word, okay? And so therefore we have a survey and she's got all of her stuff, she could, she can put it all together.
I'm sure, as, as we were told, there are surveys out there, right?
Correct.
So I'm going to trust that the ISD who's been doing this knows what to put on those surveys and what to put out.
Yes.
I mean, this is their job, this is what they do.
But you got to put out why the survey's coming to you.
Right.
Why, why is parents that you're getting this?
Yes. So are we good with giving direction for Mr. Wombley to at least start with the survey?
Yes.
I'm, I agree with that. Okay. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is our bond update. Mr. Wombley?
I have no update.
No update? Yay! Wow! Okay, thank you. Our, our next item is our public comments. Since the last board meeting, I received one email from a parent about her teacher's daughter, which Mr. Wombley responded to. Thank you emails were sent out to the presenters from the last board meeting and I received several replies of gratitude. Mr. Wombley responded to the two individuals who spoke at our public comments. That's it for what I've received. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
I have a daughter in fourth grade. I'm here tonight to address the board, got my frustration with what has happened with my daughter and the situation that happened in her classroom, which put her teacher on administrative leave for over three weeks, which I believe she resigned. Is that correct? Was the control resigned?
That is.
Yes, I know.
Okay. So now my teacher doesn't have, my daughter doesn't have a teacher at all. She's in the fourth grade, 90 years old, getting taught by a substitute for the last almost month ago. When will she have a teacher in her classroom? If she doesn't have a teacher soon, I might have to pull her from school and homeschooler because I, I can't have her go through this every day. She's upset that she doesn't have a teacher anymore. She adored a teacher. With the situation that happened, my daughter was called down to the office and was spoken to, but no call was given to me, telling me that my daughter was in the office, being interrogated by the school about the situation. Then the next day, she was brought back down to the office and was told she had to handwrite what happened in that classroom because the administrators didn't think that Mr. Berkmeier's notes were sufficient. She's nine. Why is she handwriting it? I want answers. She should not have to do that, especially because I didn't get a phone call. That's my daughter's interrogating. Even if she was interrogated by the police, guess what? I didn't get a phone call. Do you think you are higher than the police? Because you are not. So if this ever happens again, my daughter is questioned by anyone in that school without my knowledge, I will pursue legal action against each and every one of you. So do better by all of our children, and I hope that my daughter has a teacher soon.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, being no other public comments, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent and legislative update.
I'll start with the legislative update. The, with the January 1st change in control at the Senate, we don't expect very many legislative sessions. In fact, the House saw this morning, set an updated schedule that they will be meeting very few days over the month of December. Tuesday, the 6th, Wednesday, the 7th, and Thursday, the 8th are listed as tentative days for House sessions. The Senate also released their schedule, they will have a regular session tomorrow, November 29th. Future session days will be determined, there's nothing on the schedule at this point. This is important because oftentimes policies get approved or passed during what's called the lame duck, that aren't often thought out, and so we will be watching this time period very, very closely. From the elementary school report, the, all buildings have been working on attendance initiatives. The elementary school, if you've seen some Facebook, they have an attendance initiative underway, they have a campaign or a contest, the grade at the fewest number of appliances. There's a reward, a candy cane party with Ms. Mangoni and Mr. Gibson, trying to increase the attendance. As you've heard from Mrs. Staples in previous board meetings, attendance is an issue with the number of days students have been absent and then how that impacts instruction. There was no report provided for the middle school, at the high school, CTE Culinary Arts Program last week. The restaurant is not yet open to the public, but will be second semester, but they did have an opportunity to put on a Thanksgiving feast. Several staff members at the high school and some district personnel attended. I actually found, used one of the recipes at Thanksgiving myself, didn't turn out as well as I hoped it would, but it was very good. So I'm looking forward to the restaurant opening second semester. CTE, Mrs. Zabo is working with all the CTE teachers to get all the fall advisory boards completed. I believe we have the, the computer programming one this coming Wednesday, I believe it is, and the EMT, is it tomorrow?
Tomorrow, and the culinary is tomorrow.
So we're working on those, and those are where we took a curriculum updates, what are the plans for the program, how can we make it better and improve the program. Band concerts are scheduled for next Tuesday, December 6th, with a choir concert on Thursday, December 15th. Both concerts are at 7 o'clock in the auditoriums. If you have a chance, make your way to the, one of the concerts, the holiday concerts. Last, actually two weekends ago, the Richmond Theater, after our last board meeting, put on Puffs or the Seven increasingly events, eventful years at a certain magical school production. It was the weekend before Thanksgiving, my wife and I had a chance to go out on Friday, I know Mrs. Arab, or Mrs. Arab, Staples went on Sunday, and several administrators and staff members went throughout the weekend. It was very good. I'm not a Harry Potter person, I haven't followed, but it was funny, it was, they did a really, really good job, so congratulations to the students. They have a musical coming out, at the time they haven't announced it yet, so I don't know if they've decided at this point, but I'm looking forward to that musical this spring with auditions after the first of the year. spring with auditions after the first of the year. So it's good to have our theater program back. Salvation Army Red Kettle Bell has begun and you might ask, why am I mentioning this? Because many of our students and staff, including myself, will be volunteering to ring the bell at various locations in our community. So if you see some of our students or staff, if you're able to make a donation, the funds raised help needy families, many of whom live in our community. So it's a great cause. The Lions Club will also begin their Good Fellows Newspaper Drive this weekend and they'll also have it, be giving newspapers at the, their Breakfast of Santa the following weekend, which will be the weekend of the 10th. All of these funds also stay in our communities and the Lions do a lot of support or provide a lot of support for our community and our district. So I encourage you to, if you see someone hail with a newspaper, make a donation if you're able to. This weekend, Saturday, December 3rd, we will again participate in the Santa Parade. We have one of our school buses that will be lit up and with lots of lights and colors. So if you'd like to ride in the parade, if you could be at Lee Elementary School parking lot at five o'clock for any staff, any parents want to ride on the bus, you're more than welcome to. Board members, if you'd like to, five o'clock is the lineup, 5:30 the parade starts and it culminates with the tree lighting ceremony at the end. Saturday, December 10th is Sandy's Kids fundraiser. It raises funds for needy families in Richmond Community Schools. It starts at seven o'clock at the Cooks Hotel on Beach Street. Again, there'll be food, 50/50 and raffles. It's a great night. In the last couple of years that they've been able to, they've raised a lot of money for Sandy's kids. And a lot of these funds aren't only just for the holidays, but they help families throughout. And again, this is 100% of the funds raised is for Richmond families and Richmond students. Lastly, I would just like to say, I know with the election, you know, a lot of the board members congratulated everybody at the last election. We are just waiting on the certified election results from the clerk, which when I talked to them today, they said they should be in the mail tomorrow, emailed if not today. I didn't remember seeing it. It would be tomorrow. So I will be calling in our new, our board members who were elected, because once I receive that, I have a certain timeframe to have the, sign in the oath of office and get it submitted back. So Board Member Sutton in Cunningham will begin their six-year term in January. Board Member Futunin will begin her four-year term. She will actually be sworn in at our next board meeting as a ceremony because we officially start that one. And our newest board member, Board Member O'Donoghue, is right there. So she'll be, also be sworn in. So I'll be in contact with you to set that up. But I'm just waiting on the official results from the canvas and then it becomes official. With that, that's all I have.
I have a question. So I'm curious, are there still, if you know, are there still families or students in need here at the district? I know in the past that you can contact the social worker and they have like a list of that, but can you tell me, are there still anybody like in need? Like is there still?
Yes.
Okay.
There are. And we work with the social worker because we try to respect the dignity of the families that are involved and our social workers do a tremendous job. Mrs. Laratanda kind of spearheads that, but this is what Chintz get the middle school and this pair at the elementary school really try to find resources and service and connect families to them.
So if anybody wanted to reach out and how they can reach out to any one of those three individuals?
Yeah. You can hit them directly. On our website, there is a tab under, it's under parent and it's Holiday Assistance. And on it, we have several programs from Salvation Army. There's one of our businesses in the area that if you just want a Christmas tree, they will donate a Christmas tree to families to have it set up. And Sandy's Kids is on there with Mrs. Laratanda's contact. You can contact her. We have some families that want to adopt the family. We have some schools that have adopted families or staffs, so that will be your first contact.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is I had some interest from the board. Angela, I'm gonna start with you today or this week.
I would just like to say welcome or congratulations to Kelly O'Donoghue for being elected as a board member. Excited to work with you coming forward and to have us all together as a team. And I guess good luck to the high school band and choir performance next week. I know they've been putting a lot of work into that and I'm excited to see that. And then also I too had a chance to see Puffs on Friday, at least the first half. They did an amazing job to see those students, be able to pour their heart into that kind of work is amazing. So if anybody can make it to the next one, I would really, you know, advise you to do so because it was amazing to see.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much. Danielle?
I'm good.
Thank you. Sandy?
I want to say, I worked the box office for the play, The Puffs, and it's been a long time since I've been in the box office and I just want to mention how fancy it is with the windows and the speaker, where there's no longer that thing that you have to pull down that just keeps falling down. So that was really nice. It's really nice to see, for sure. But I also wanted to say thank you to everybody and thank you to my supporters for electing me to be on the board. I appreciate that. And I also wanted to say congratulations to Danielle and Candace and Kelly. And I'm excited to, also I'm excited to get together and start working on some things. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Sharon?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Margaret?
I'm good.
Candace?
I wanted to say congratulations to everybody. I'm excited to start out the new year with the new, with a whole new group. Just a couple of questions. Going back to the parades, we have all these awesome parades. Does our high school have a float committee or a class or some sort of a float? Like do we have our own trailer that the school, that the committee can decorate and we can like do our own craftiness?
We, we don't. We have had this conversation multiple times at the negotiating table and other venues, even to the point that I would figure out a way to buy the trailers so that that wasn't an obstacle and.
I mean, riding the bus is fun and everything, but I mean, if we could, I mean, we could like be really crafty and creative.
Well, I know for like homecoming.
They do.
Each class had, when my daughter was in, their class advisor helped them. They, and I drove my son's truck and they decorated it. It was for Candy Land theme and we won first prize, but maybe if you can get some.
Whose trailer did you use though?
No, it wasn't.
We haven't done floats for homecoming in years.
If they do, I know they're like just like donate, like a family.
Would it be of interest for us to have a, our own district? I mean, we have like the biggest parades and.
Well, we do the bus at the, the one in the fall, that parade.
They're good old days.
We run.
We run. Thank you. It's very healthy.
And we have decorated the bus.
Yeah, and we have. So I know that we haven't done anything. I mean, you'd have to, you know, you've got teachers involved there then if you were to do something with the classes.
Right. I mean, it wouldn't just be for us. It would, you know, be able to be kind of like we rent the space for, you know, field day or, you know, different teachers might be able to rent it or PTA, PTO, you know, just different.
To create or have the trailer that they can rent to create a float for a parade.
Well, if it's not being used in one of our many parades that.
How many parades do we have?
At least two.
No, I just, when you say many parades, it makes me chuckle.
We have three.
We have parades.
We have Morale Day, Good Old Days.
Oh, that's right.
Homecoming, the children.
Five parades. I think what she's saying is like maybe just one.
I didn't throw you under the bus. I didn't throw you under the bus. I'm just, the many parades threw me.
I think some of the, some of the obstacles or challenges we've had is, is putting a float together is whoever's going to take it on.
That's not my fault.
Is a lot of coordination. For just from logistical and getting spots.
Storage.
Yes.
There hasn't been a, an interest to do that. If a staff member wants to, I will figure out a way to get the trailer.
Well, there hasn't been, we, like I said, we haven't done floats for homecoming. It makes me insane for years. So if you think you're going to get people to get interested in building floats, it's not going to happen. We haven't done it for years. There is no interest.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it makes me crazy. We have homecoming every year and we don't build floats for homecoming. It does.
Well, maybe there's an interest again if Candace is interested.
Well, you're, it sounds like you have a little passion behind that.
I obviously, I love floating. I'm not, I'm not building them. I will, I love.
Candace, I will create an hour.
Whoa, we got two.
It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
No, we don't. You know how my dream comes true? Is the high school goes back to class advisors and all that, we start building floats. That'll be my dream come true. That is a blast. It's a lot of work.
Can a board member be a class advisor? Maybe Candace could be that.
You can't because you get paid.
Unless you volunteered.
You volunteered. Mr. Womsley's right, guys, and until you've kind of been part of all of that and I did for eighteen years.
I did it for years. I loved floating. I was a class advisor for eight years. Loved every minute of it.
But there, I know, but there, the help is not there anymore. The dedication from the students wasn't there to get people to climb.
That could be. That could be. But it's just good, it's good.
New teachers, a lot of new teachers in your.
Maybe, maybe. We'll let Ms. Womsley.
I could put it out there. If there's an interest, if someone wants to do a float, maybe we start small. And if there's, I will figure out a way to get them the supplies they need. I mean, absolutely. That's, that's the first part is finding someone to be the lead to take it on. And maybe, maybe it's a PTO group that wants to do it and do it as a, you know.
Sounds like a great PTO thing.
No, truly, I'm not.
I'm thinking of welcome back to school kind of narrative and put it in the Good Old Days parade.
That is, that is.
At least start it.
PTO, middle school and elementary. And even if it's high school group, that's, that's more where that wants to come from, I think. I think it's a great idea. Mr. Womsley will check on that.
I just figured I would ask.
Absolutely. I'll put it out there, see if there's an interest. If somebody even just wants to explore it, we'll have a conversation and see what do we take. Absolutely.
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. It's a good one. I just want to remind the board that we have a special meeting next Monday, December 5th, for Mr. Womsley's evaluation. And to remind you to please get your documentation to me. I sent it out in the email for you, so I can get that all collated and be ready for Monday night. If you get it to meet by Thursday or Friday, I'll be fine. I'm going to work on it on the weekend. Okay? Thank you.
I could have a question with that.
Yes.
Being that we're going to have the new board member on, that's not going to fall into this in any way. We don't need to worry about training. I just have the one that's over to train currently.
No, because there, there's no training because there's no evaluating being done. Because it, it happened before.
It did.
Yeah, when, with Danielle. So I mean, there's no, you're, you're not really participating in the evaluation. You're kind of.
Sitting.
Sitting, experiencing it. And then, and then to me, the training happens come January before how everything gets set up for the year, I think.
Hopefully we'll have the documentation here, which means that Candace will not be with us on Monday on the board. Now, I'm going to suggest that she be allowed to come into that meeting just to give her input and then, because she has been working here and been working with Brian and the board. And then when we deliberate or talk about it, she will have to step out.
I, I don't know how kosher that is, but when we did it, when Sandy was on the board, Sandy turned in her stuff.
I submitted, yeah, I submitted.
Okay, she was not part of it.
I was a part of the meeting.
And then I read her comments.
So I'll work with Candace then. I'll work with her and make sure that I get her comments and input.
We were virtual.
Correct.
You came in, but then you left. You came in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Virtually.
Just like Deb said, yeah.
So then you did come into the meeting?
No, no, no.
Oh.
And we weren't virtual.
No, yeah, we were.
We were?
Yeah. We were virtual and I did come into the, I did come into the meeting and I did say my comments and then I left.
Got it. Okay, so that's what I would like to do.
But we did it a little differently.
Okay.
When Sandy did it, everybody brought their paper.
Yes.
And everybody wrote off their paper.
Got it.
The way you did it last year, this year, you're turning it in.
Yeah, and then I'm collating it and put it all together.
The collate, excuse me.
Yeah.
So there's a slight difference, but yeah.
Sure. Okay, well, I'll work with Candace. What I'll do is I'll work with Candace. I'll get her input and I'll make sure that I have that information and I'll say this is, when we're working through it, that this is from her. Okay? Sounds good.
But if you wanted to include, there's nothing.
Right. Then we won't be pressured to get it in this week. I think we already talked. We kind of, we were working on it. But I will let them know when we get a time together to let you know. So thank you.
So it's okay for only five to do the evaluation technically?
Well, it'd be six.
Sharon, Margaret, Deb. All right. Minus me. Right. There'll be six.
And we did have, if anybody wants an attorney-client letter, I believe when Danielle came on and Sandy about the role of a new board member, I do have that copy. If a board member wants to read it. The policy's different because it was a Neola policy, but it's still.
Right.
The condom. It's not a new one, it's from the, come out in 20?
Yeah, 2020.
So it was 20 that, or 19?
Not 19.
No, it was 2020.
Yeah, it was 2020. Okay, any other comments? Okay, we're going to move on to our action items. I am looking for a motion for the approval of an overnight extended student trip for the basketball program. I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the basketball program's overnight extended student trip to Traverse City on December 2nd through the 4th, 2022, as presented at the November 14th, 2022 Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation. Do I have a support?
Support.
Was that you, Sandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of overnight extended student trips for the wrestling program. I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the wrestling programs overnight slash extended student trips to Defiance College on December 16th and 17th, 2022. New Lothrop High School on January 6th and 7th, 2023, and Lowell High School on January 20th and 21st, 2023, as presented at the November 14th, 2022 Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the motion for the approval of the 2022-23 Student Athletic Code of Conduct Handbook.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the proposed changes to the 2022-23 Student Athletic Code of Conduct Handbook as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support? Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? The only question, the only question I had, I had asked, there's no signature lines?
That they've received it?
Signature, yeah, that they've, that they've read it.
Well, we could add that, that'd be part of the handbook, it'd be part of the agenda sign-in sheet, that it's been handed or that they've read it. Mr. Trent sent that to me earlier, right before the holiday or this morning.
I didn't see it come back.
That was something that you talked about. I can take care of that. I have a page made up where it says I've agreed and, or read and agreed to follow this. And I can keep that right with the contracts.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion?
The other thing I was going to just point out is the board saw the stuff and teal is from the last meeting, just so we went back and made some changes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for the, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the 2022-23 Athletic Coaches Handbook.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the proposed changes to the 2022-2023 Athletic Coaches Handbook as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you. Any discussion? Same, same question. There's going to be a signature page there, too.
Sorry, and I thought we were already on the coaches one. The student, they do have a spot they sign on family ID.
Oh, a family one.
The coaches one is the one that I have the sheet.
Got it. Okay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the resolution for summer tax collection.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and impose a summer property tax levy to collect all school property taxes in each city or township in which this district is located, as outlined in the attached resolution.
Do I have support? Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question. Is this something that we always have to do? I don't recall ever doing it before, I guess.
Yeah, usually it's either been the first meeting in December or the last meeting, you do it every year, so you allow them to know you're collecting all your school taxes in the summer.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of amendment to the contract between the Richmond Community Schools Board of Education and Teamsters State, County, and Municipal Workers, Local 2114 Secretaries.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the letter of agreement to amend the contract between the Richmond Community School Board of Education and Teamsters State, County, and Municipal Workers, Local 214 Secretaries, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. Was that Sharon? It was me. I'm sorry. Thank you, Margaret. Any discussion?
I also have a question about this. So the starting pay for a new hire would be, would be what? When I was reading the documentation, I was a little bit confused. It kind of shows, the way I have read it anyways, was that there was a position starting at like 14, 12.
It, when someone hires in, you technically place them where they want based on experience and years.
So it's not going to be $15 an hour start pay?
With the direction the board had, I'm starting people, if you're a 10-month secretary, at 2.5, which is 15.07.
He's just pretending.
So we didn't agree to, excuse me, take off steps?
Okay.
But the direction was, is $15 is our starting rate, so any new hires would start at 15.07. Step 2.5 for a 10-month secretary, or step 1.5 for a 12-month secretary, which is 15.07.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just on page 1, Brian, the Article 19 work schedule, in that blue, take up the word "in" in the last sentence.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for the, for a motion for the approval of crisis alert notification system.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve a five-year agreement for the purchase of crisis alert notification system from Centegix for an amount not to exceed $136,950, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. Thank you. Sandy? Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I just...
I'm going to say my name after every time.
That would help. I just, hard to hear down that way. Okay, any discussion?
Other than this is outstanding, and very, very excited to have this in our school.
It's an amazing idea. I love it.
Okay. This will be a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sandra?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
My vote, aye. Motion carries. Being no further business, the board will adjourn at 8:53.